This is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for February first, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Vivasio?
Here.
Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Ms. Menard?
Yeah.
Father Jay?
Here.
Dr. Nara?
Yes.
In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, as any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public. A member of this public who wishes to record a meeting must first know the prior to the chair, must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment. Established prior to the chair is not to interfere with the meeting. Does anybody?
Mr. Matt.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to approve January eleventh. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, one point four students.
I'm Brian Nady. I'm a senior in the left side. At transfer begin, students are golden make things. There are few with a half day taking place. Hockey just had their senior night and it's permanent well with their co-op team. Point basketball is four and eight competing against some of the bigger one teams. Girl basketball six and six and three and one to make larger business and look to do well against the major competition. Track goes when they fly out of this year and the boys were five and one and many athletes moving on stage. They're even they're even athletes competing for visiting and swimming and diving. Key club has been involved in many community service activities. And the city government wrapped up the code drive bringing in over fifty coats for the added way and helping seven specific families in that community. Diamond Theater prepares for their performance of a not so dark and stormy night competing on March first at Case High School.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good.
Uh, do we have anybody signed up for citizen input?
We can work.
Moving on to point oh, a the policy subcommittee report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The policies of committee has met. Um, this was an article one point three which looked for us at the last meeting. As far as the same time buyout. We we believe it's out of subcommittee that the contract to contract they both have signed individual contracts at sixty dollars a day. And um, we at this time feel the subcommittee does not agree on paying any more than the sixty. As far as the eight fifty for Mr. Lozaro, uh, for his class that he took, um, because we had paid it in the past. He is the subcommittee, uh, believe that the eight fifty should uh, should be paid out. As far as the uh, medical at ninety percent, um, it is not Mr. Lozaro's contract. And uh, we have informed him that it is uh, white, like different agreements, uh, since she's in the union, she has her way to that procedure. Uh, that is our. Policy subcommittee's uh, statement.
Does anybody have any?
They're at the contract says sixty dollars a day.
Their contract, their individual contract, yes.
And what are they asking for?
Eighty, is it?
Eighty dollars.
Something something.
Eighty dollars.
Yes, forty one cents.
And that number comes from? The DTA.
DTA contract.
And they're not members of the obviously.
I know.
The the eight fifty that was paid, it was paid in the past?
You would pay it last year. It is not in his contract to get paid for classes. Um, but uh, since we did pay it last year and we never brought it to his attention that it is not his contract. Um, we doubt that that's only fair to pay any eight fifty a year.
So it was our mistake.
Um, it was an oversize from uh, A and B.
Alright, anybody else?
If I may, just want to be very clear on um, on kind of what was stated about. Um, my way can pursue, I made a very clear supplement policy that I'm bringing issue, I'm the one that carries insurance, this is has is a separate entity for that. I want to be abundantly clear on public record about that. Um, as far as what the decision was, obviously that was decided in this policy subcommittee. I did raise the question to the policy subcommittee as what the next step course of action was. And the subcommittee said that there was no further action I could take in this arena at this point in time, so I wanted to share that with the committee.
Uh, that was not directed by the committee, that was directed by our attorney.
That's fair, fair correction. So I just wanted to bring that to the committee as it relates to that.
About the insurance.
Correct, insurance and also the difference that hey. Uh, my argument again, just to be transparent, not to reargue the statement was that um, there was a policy put in place that dictated individual contracts. And we'll only see what the policy dictates, uh, contrary to what we believe or what I believe is, I want to speak to my end of it, was a contractual error. That's why I want to be clear about the whole committee about that.
The contractual error on on my contract where stipulate sixty dollars a day, where the policy states that if there is a benefit that uh, not.
Stipulated in my individual contract that I still didn't afford it. For example, the educational reimbursement, that's the position I took on was based on the policy, not I should get a beach because it's practice, was based on the policy. And not what I got in the past, okay? On the same thing with the cash out, I would not look at the payout for sixty dollars a day. Had I not been leaving, so it was relevant in the time to look at that policy and relevant to look at my contract. And that's when I made that note of error. And again, I won't speak Mr. Boss, but she would probably say the same about that particular uh, action item. And then as it relates back to the health insurance, ninety percent reimbursement, again, just want to be transparent with the committee. Um, it was for four existing couples. Well, I was employed as well as my wife was employed prior that time. It was an exclusionary and discriminatory clause that was written before my time before I was married. However, I should have been afforded that opportunity because again, policy gives that opportunity to have the DTA benefit, even if it's not defined in mine. And there's four stay there. The subcommittee stated their position on it and I just want to be transparent, not to reargue or rehash it.
I don't really think.
Just on the uh, I understand what you're saying, if it's not defined in your contract, it should fall, it could fall under the thing, but the payout is defined in your contract. The amount was defined in your contract.
Correct, contract. Right, but it's correct, it's that number, I and again, I don't reargue, but my comment statement last time was, let's just for the sake of saying, say if that amounts. Said a hundred dollars today in my individual contract, but the policy stays that you get with the DTA yet. And you sat here before me, Kevin, it's eighty dollars and forty one cents, I'd say you're correct, the policy is going to over supersede contractual error. And this situation is reversed, so I'm not here to reargue.
I get what you're saying, I just want to say, I just want to state that it was actually, that benefit was mentioned in your contract. It was.
Yes, it was, there was a number, there was a number that was put in paper that cracked in error.
It was defined.
So does the policy that we have oversee all individual contracts?
Uh, contract is a contract that went through this with our attorney. They sign it, that's an individual contract.
Policy, they're have the DTA union members?
Say again?
The policy that they're referring to, which I don't have memorized. Is that referring to DTA members or is that oversee?
So, no individual contracts, policy doesn't, you can't have a policy that supersedes the DTA, like a bargain contract in any any.
We don't have a collective.
So there's a conflict.
He didn't ask me that.
I'm sorry, so there is a conflict in the policy and contract.
Correct.
No, there isn't.
There is.
Excuse me. Well, that's that's obviously your argument is I don't, I don't believe there is because it is defined in the contract. So there isn't a conflict. That's what it says, that's what it is, that's what we paid out everybody before you, well, the contracts are paid out based on the language within the contract.
All due respect, Greg. I'm not here advocating for those individuals.
I didn't say you cover it, I didn't say you work.
Again, please let me speak, I'm asking kindly, respectfully. What I'm saying is, what you guys do, others, that's for them to battle and argue that, I'm here to dispute that. And that is a policy to put in place to oversee how it's wanted here to and create some uniforming according to the subcommittee that was last meeting. That's what the policy is there. I'm not going to reargue it, but I'm going to be clear and transparent about my understanding of what a policy indicates. It's not a guideline, it's not a recommendation, it is ironclad, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, I think um, does anybody else? Do you?
I don't have any.
Alright, so we've got the policy subcommittee making a recommendation. Does anybody want to?
I make a motion that the uh, sick time buyout be according to their individual contracts that they both had signed. Sixty dollars a day.
Some? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, oppose?
I'm abstaining.
One abstain. Okay.
I'll make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Lozaro, the uh, the uh, awarded the eight eight hundred and fifty dollars for the class that he had taken. Uh, people had not paid.
Hey, I have a motion. Need a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Okay, on the ninety percent.
And on the uh, I make a motion that the ninety percent for um, for insurance. It is not in the contract, therefore, um, I make a motion that not break it.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, oppose?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Alright, so moving on to three point. Three point one on the matters, the MSBA.
You'd like me out of this. Um, Mr. Bentley, would you like to cover that? I can, I have not been here this week, so I don't know what's going on. They didn't read that Friday and Saturday, we are going to take care of the uh, device, the events as well, if you move. I know.
The MSBA school group had spotted out that they are moving, they're on target, uh, as they're moving on with their spaces officially.
I'd just like to make one statement.
Uh, you tell me.
I hope you enjoy watching this tomorrow on this whole lunchkins like you did last time. I'm sorry, where's she at?
That was a strike there.
She can repeat it if you want. Thanks.
Stay, 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 stay.
Sit down, Brian.
Yeah.
MSBA, uh, favorite project, fine.
The MSBA project is moving along according to their schedule. Uh, we're getting constant contact, we do have another meeting tomorrow at uh, nine o'clock. They commit for their weekly bonus construction and architect meeting. And uh, they will commit to, they do plans with us as to what we're planning, what they're planning and where they're going for the week. They recently started something with what's called uh, shot. Give me the right length, what they put.
Put nails into the building.
The nails into the side. What they're doing is that they're now tearing away at the sides of where the building is going to go, but so that it doesn't collapse in on them. They actually put these huge nails, literally, it's like a fingernail, and they shoot it into there, they screen it and then they they plaster back a better word. Five hundred. Oh, and so it doesn't fall down. Uh, other than that, the technical language, I will lead to the technical expert, it's considered to the English teacher.
The uh, the only other thing I can add to what Mr. Bentley said, they are working. Um, for the next sixty days, it's going to be the same as, same as, um, unless they run into any problem that they require attention. But but they're just moving a lot of dirt. Um, there's a lot of rock being chewed up and spit up. The material that they've been testing so far has been very good, uh, usable uh, material. Um, so that's good to hear. Uh, the contractor is bringing in sand and rock to mix with the material that we have. Um, there'll be, is the on Friday and Saturday, as I just mentioned to Mr. Bentley. Um, I did get an email that they're going to start the procedure, they have everything in place, D E, insurance, the contract is everybody in place. To remove the asbestos pipe, uh, which is the drainage pipe that is in the ground. Where the building is going to go, you want to see where the pocket, where the pocket spaces are. So they're going to be removing that over the course of Friday and Saturday. Uh, in that way, the contract to get sure that you're putting the nails into these uh. Even the reason for the nails, um, and the material being put into the embankment is so when they still put up the foundation. It will hold back the uh, always be able to back that uh, that that embankment. Um, we also, after our nine o'clock meeting last week, uh, Mr. Bentley and Mr. Rebelo and I, uh, along with several other members. Uh, met with the MSBA virtual and um, and they kind of gave us a list of basically what they're going to be doing with this project over the next uh. Uh, next three years, but they do have a person that'll be coming up with the MSBA to come out and look at the project on uh. On a, I think it's monthly or a weekly basis and a monthly basis. And uh, and they, obviously, they get reports daily from uh, Castle Blue's Colliers and uh, a lady who also said that it's a very big to them. So uh, they're very happy at this point, we're happy that we'll be doing it, even though it's a lot of blood, but uh, it is moving on.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to play football on that right now.
Yeah, true.
Okay, uh, the National Grid temporary service, um.
I can recall up, but I'm saying I'm going to defer it to you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, that temporary service is what, uh, the person by the name of Anne Aducci from National Grid contacted the school through me. Uh, this school, you know, to hook up the temporary service, there is a charge associated with that. She sent in the uh, paperwork, uh, I contacted Mr. Jennings on that. It was a contract that has been done up, which we needed to uh, sign. Uh, had the cost, uh, assigned to it, but cost associated, which is eighteen thousand, thousand, Mr. Jennings does have that, I believe he has that. Sign this one here, is that correct?
Oh, you have the one that he's designed, okay.
She has like a real official copy. Okay. And and that comes out of the MSBA.
Correct. I believe.
Correct, but this needs, this needs, I'm sorry, it does come out of the project, but there is a recommendation to approve uh, the National Grid installation temporary service proposal. As the, need a motion on that?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, oppose?
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, and I'll sign that with the, remind me. Alright, MSBA project expenditure, Mr. Kitchen.
Expenditures submitted for this evening are our, Captain Blue's, uh, three hundred and forty-six thousand, six twelve, fifty dollars. Suffolk of the AIA. Four, uh, two million, fifty-eight thousand, six forty-one and thirty-five cents.
Not perceived, uh, noise. I do. I just, I just need to call you, the problem they have is they do everything at the end of the month, since our meeting moved up to February first. The accounting department didn't have enough time to get it, so they'll get it, a lot of double, maybe next month.
Alright, we can take a bye. Need a motion to approve the expenditures?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, oppose? Alright, okay. And then we have three point one, the Mr. Bentley.
Yes, thank you, foot personnel, we're getting into another busy time in the school year as we're getting ready to prep up our students in MCAS among other programs that we have here. And again, I keep bringing to this committee, our appointments of new personnel, our personnel, some new. Uh, that will be working with our students in particular, we do have a new L P and clinical lab educator, she was part-time there. Full-time position became more due resignation, she has moved into that. Uh, we very happy to announce that Dylan Torres, who was a two thousand and sixteen graduate of Diamond Regional. Has been hired to be the culinary arts pastry instructor, as the other one did resign for personal reasons. Uh, we hired some long-term substitutes due to absences of our faculty number for various reasons. Uh, internal math teachers, you may not get exactly what that is, but I'd like to actually commend the math department. We had troubles getting a math instructor, uh, we had to have it advertised. Uh, very critical that this position in particular is with MCAS students and no substitute, unless they're mathematically inclined, to can fill in. These uh, teachers did step up and say that we will forego for pay, we will forego a uh, preparation period in order to teach the class. They're receiving the pay in the contract, but what an un, uh, missed prep period would be plus prep time, it's actually a little more economical and wiser than bringing in a long-term substitute. Incoming grade nine, our math department brought up that the math placement test for our students coming in doesn't accurately reflect the needs of what our curriculum and our scheduling has. They decided among themselves, our committee, they put forth in order to uh, create their own test. The committee was warned, uh, they're being paid to do this and it was done. And then we have three other appointments in there, as you see, uh, two mentors and an intramural boys volleyball coach, which will be subject brand new for Diamond Regional. Uh, to be paid on the intramural pay scale when the court is available, I say it that way. Uh, because we also have coming up shortly softball, baseball, and they are going to be doing indoor practices where the committee before they walk sign, so. And that's the, that's what the committee's information.
Alright.
Sorry, you may all long wait to know that, in case you have questions.
Uh, next, three point one C.
Yes.
Travel.
I have several that are here and I'll have one that'll be adding into. Uh, first of all, a student travel, the dance team has submitted an overnight out-of-state travel request to attend the regional tournament on March nine, two thousand and twenty-four in Burlington, Vermont. I do see that the dance team advisor is present, should you have any questions? If you look at what they are proposing, it's in your packet, that starts off with good evening, members of the school committee. Uh, and it's very well and didactically written out for us what the cost would be, where it is. If you have a moment to read that?
Did you see the dance teacher?
Nine o'clock, I. Nobody's seen, White's, White's a good helper to.
Ms. Menard, I probably needed that last, thank you very much. Thank you. But.
I did it after.
Mr. Vialto is present here tonight, in case you do have any questions. Uh, but the recommendation is to approve the request for overnight out-of-state student travel if the team qualifies, so that's the key right there. Okay, uh, and this is actually forward thinking, because if so, it's next month, it's in March.
Alright, got a recommendation, need a motion to approve? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, abstain, one abstain.
Thank you, the second one is for DECA, uh, has submitted an after-hours student travel request to go to a Boston Red Sox game in April. Uh, the approximate travel time would be is three o'clock, which is after two until eleven thirty at night. And the recommendation is to approve this request for the DECA club for an after-hours student travel for then a Boston Red Sox game in Boston.
Motion is, need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye, oppose?
There is uh, another travel request by the National Honor Society. They would like to do a out-of-state student travel request for a field trip to Times Square in New York. Uh, on March twentieth, they will be traveling approximately six a.m. until ten thirty P M. The recommendation again is to approve uh, the request submitted by the National Honor Society for an out-of-state travel.
Need a motion? Go ahead.
Can I just ask, would you repeat what that is again? What are they doing?
To Times Square.
Yeah, National Honor Society, our students are going to be visiting the nine eleven memorial, they're going to be visiting the museum on Broadway.
Okay, okay.
And a few other things that they're voting on to go get to while they're there, it's our National Honor Society.
Yeah, I was going to say, everyone else is.
I'm a New York kid, I was born in the Bronx. You don't go there just to hang out in Times Square.
No, it is, it is educational, uh, but yeah.
Yeah, well, those, those are good.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye, oppose?
And the theater club, there's actually going to be one more after this, the theater club has submitted two after-hours student travel requests to attend a tech night at Case High School. On February twenty-sixth, four to seven o'clock, and the theater festival at Case High School, March second, six thirty to ten P M. The recommendation is to approve that for our theater club to go to Case on the dates that they indicated at the times.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? All in favor? Aye, and I do have one that uh, in here from a teacher, uh, and it is happening shortly.
We'll be taking that up with, that's the one with not forty-eight hours notice, right?
Correct.
We have a agenda, I don't take that up. Mr. Chairman, if I just may add, I don't know if you want to clarify any of these, but you just addressed the policy. You're going to be voting on that policy because they're using vans or buses.
We have to get to that uh, policy, I guess, because it was.
Well, it's in here though. Well, we just. The policy, uh, policy, that's what I'm trying to say, the policy hasn't existed, says you can't use vans.
Yeah, but we, I thought we uh, oh, that's not coming up, but.
Well, we approved the.
You you approved the overnight travel, but technically, the policy you have in place, you have to use a bus. But the first one said they want vans. So so I I didn't mean to, I, I just thought about it right now.
The vets, I think there's a reason why this came to a head.
If the committee would want to vote to reconsider, uh, that they can take it up.
Is that the only one that we would need to reconsider?
The first one has vans, the second one for the Red Sox has vans, I don't know about the others, that's what I'm saying, I just thought, just came to my mind. Are you using a bus for the National Honor Society or vans or?
National Honor Society is bus, but the first, the dance team and the DECA are both vans.
The, I I see the dance, it doesn't say here for vans.
The dance?
No, it doesn't say that.
It's right on, it's right on that sheet, I read it, that's what I just pulled up, put it away.
Oh, yeah. Well, we were, we were going by this.
No, I know, Mr. Chairman, that's why I'm bringing it up. I I don't.
It's on two, yeah, it's, it all happened though at the same time, thank you, uh, Chair Brilliant. It's on, the dance team is requesting the use of vans. The Red Sox trip, that's what brought this whole thing to a light, they had requested vans. But we have an existing policy that was called, probably this evening, that the.
No, your existing policy says you can't use vans.
The existing one says you can't use vans. The policy committee took up revision to that.
So, so it has.
This is what I said, this is coming up in the uh, agenda.
Alright, but I'm a little confused about the policy that we had prior.
Yes.
Is it our policy or the N A S C?
The N A S C, that was.
But did we adopt that?
Yes.
Our policy?
Yes, we did, adopted it in uh, two thousand and twenty-one.
Alright, so.
So.
Yeah. That's why it's very, yes, yeah. That's the nicest way I can say it, so I think the only way that we may could do this by.
Okay, just do that, should approve the overnights, once you do the policy, redo the vote and include those two, we'll do it afterwards.
That's real.
But it's the dance and the uh.
And the DECA. Yes, the DECA.
How about the theater? So theater is um.
A bus, how many of the kids in the theater?
Your club?
Yeah.
Uh, round twenty.
How do you get, Captain using a bus?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's just the two of them that we would have to.
When we get to the.
Okay. Alright, three point one, the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, we have uh, Mr. James Kennedy has donated two to electricity. Uh, if they were to purchase these tools, it has due, it has an estimated value of two fifty to three hundred dollars. Uh, recommendations to approve the donation tools by Mr. James Kennedy with contact with the electricity department.
Need a motion to approve? Need a second? Second? All in favor? Aye, oppose? Okay, E, the change in the school calendar for twenty-three twenty.
Yes, this will be myself, but I will pass the information on to Mr. Rebelo, C S F. Uh, we're asking the committee to uh, alter the school calendar, and I'll give you the dates, Mr. Rebelo, say why. February the seventh is going to be a full day, February eighth a half day. May the eighth is a full day, May the ninth on the half day, on the existing calendar, it's the days where we need to put up, and the reasons, Mr. Rebelo.
Sure, so we originally had um, February seventh as a half day, the reason why for the change is the state identified that as an MCAS retest day. For the MCAS students have all day to test, so if they're getting out at twelve o'clock and somebody's still testing, they don't have a bus home. Uh, so we don't learn of that date until well after the committee uh, sees and approves upcoming year, for example. Uh, in March, you'll get next year's master calendar, we don't have the dates yet for that, that's why the change. And then on May eighth, same thing with A P testing, uh, once we learned of that date, we're going to move it back uh, one day, so to kids have the full day to test A P.
Alright, so uh, asking the committee, my recommendation would be to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar with the changes as presented.
Need a motion to approve? The second? All in favor? Aye, oppose?
Thank you, benefits of students and. And those half days for for professional developers, well, valid. We're still working on the N E S. Thank you.
I, she doesn't know.
I was just saying, is this a secret?
Alright, three point three on the matters, F, distinguished graduate honorary.
And I'll, I'll take both of these separately. Uh, the special net recognition committee, um, we have putting forward three names for distinguished graduates, three names for honorary diplomas. Uh, and uh, on the distinguished. graduates, Michael Greenall, Ray Prebo, and Roger St. Martin. Distinguished graduate, uh, Michael was a machine shop grad, he's now in charge of, he's an engineer for different buildings that has done that in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, fine example of someone who can go far in their trade. Ray Prebo, a carpentry graduate, class of eighty six, but he is in charge of all of the Y U C As on the South Coast, including the, uh, taking care of the Swansea Y U C A and the G's that are all there, the land that built there, getting it ready for, uh, diamond athletes, make sure that they're prepped up. Roger St. Martin is a machine shop graduate, uh, for diamond and he is retiring as the Fall River Fire Chief. Uh, it's interesting, you can go into any trade here and it can take you to any trade up there. I, I just thought that would be a good, good to recognize that, that he's a diamond grad that has done very well. On the honorary diplomas, this is given annually to individuals who have some deep ties to, uh, Diamond Regional, have done good things with Diamond Regional. Uh, I'll take these out of order on purpose. The very first one is a Jerry Murphy, you may remember him as the gentleman who built and was the superintendent of the building project for Suffolk for this diamond. He attended our, uh, groundbreaking ceremony, he flew in from California and he made the promise that he would be back for ribbon cutting. His daughter is the overall superintendent of that project. So we thought it would be fitting to award him an honorary diamond diploma. Uh, the second one is a former mayor of the city of Fall River, Carlton Verres, uh, longtime mayor, longest serving mayor in the city of Fall River, deep ties to vocational education and promotion of diamond. In fact, he signed in nineteen eighty one, he signed the proclamation that's in my office declaring, uh, that vocational education week in the city of Fall River, uh, gave diamond recognition for all its good things it had done. And the third and final member, not by least at all, is our own former senator, Joe Menard, a current member of the Diamond School Committee, who has been a lifelong educator, a proponent of education and a proponent of vocational education. Those are the recommendations that have been put forth, uh, and I'd be looking for a recommendation from this committee.
Thank you.
In order to affirm these has been awarded on class night this year, which I believe will be June, if my calendar is correct.
Need a motion? Motion, uh, motion for the distinguished graduate and honorary diploma are, uh, names that are written on our sheet. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Do we tell an hour comes with the car or a little? It's a bunch of money.
Three point one, other matters, G, we have a bunch of monthly financial reports.
Uh, nothing outstanding on the financials, roughly about forty percent, sixty percent through the year. Numbers reflect most of our categories that would be about fifty six to forty two percent left. They do not, they, this could be offset with the S O grant, so substitute type of technology and. Professional development, stuff like grants, ones that indicate a hundred percent, but we haven't done the looks yet. So the school choice one of the last, the last entry is a hundred percent, seventy seven thousand, we'll get that. So there's nothing outstanding. We did do a, uh, a transfer and put it into the policy, it's under two thousand dollars, so I have to advise you that we moved some money from the auto technology, uh, assessment line to the software line to try and update it and amount of funds. There's only two negatives, one's the answer, one's, uh, cheerleading, it's just a matter of fundraising. They've always been successful in that. Small, small.
Substitute.
We did, it's coming out of S F three. Yeah, in S F three, we put a hundred fifty thousand dollars into that, we paid that out of there, uh, which will, which may cause an issue next year. We'll budget the same amount next year, this year, uh, be made up revisited. Obviously, everyone increased their rates when they had to get subs, uh, but I don't feel there's a chance on those rates next year.
Mr. Chairman, uh, are we having trouble getting subs at all?
No, it's really good shape.
No, it's really good shape. It was a push at the beginning of this year and actually last year, I should say, and moved into this year, having a, a good quantity of substitutes at the ready, should COVID make a rebound. It is getting, it's back in the building a little bit, uh, but we made sure of that.
All right. Anybody else, any questions, comment?
Truck list, we've already gone over, uh, M S B A expenditures, we have two for carpentry, new lines for fourteen thousand five hundred, it's for the, uh, rack systems with the seventeen up on the shafts, so last month we did advanced manufacturing on some of the metal racks to get the stock off the ground, they'll be able to transport those down, we have a facility, we did the same in, uh, carpentry, one for war and Frenching carpentry, rather than buying new, uh, planes, Mr. Patel's gonna need two law fields, so they're just gonna change the whole motorhead out of them, with, uh, two, instead he has, just keep the old, the old, the, uh, decker is for entry, that has to be amended to fourteen thousand seven hundred, fifteen thousand, and we have one additional student that was, uh, belong to the entry.
Fifteen thousand even?
Fifteen even, it's three hundred a student. And, uh, B P A is thirteen thousand for state, where's B P A? This is professionals of America.
Okay, these do, yeah.
What's your? We need motion to approve the expenditures, the change of the, uh.
Decker.
Uh, motion made? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Moving on to the.
Aye, bypass list. Yes, each year, uh, bring to the committee, uh, how many students would they like to be entering grade back class? Standard is three hundred and sixty five, last year this committee, uh, it was recommended if they voted to bring in three hundred and eighty five. And I have spoken with, uh, Mr. Eric Silva, the interim director of guidance, and I asked him, did that, what did that do to the building? And he said that number was fine for the building. Again, my reasoning behind this is that, and you'll see this a little later on in some of our reports coming up, that there are, Diamond is still sought after highly by students coming into the building, you'll see that in a report very shortly. Uh, the three eighty five, again, builds the base of the freshman year going forward, we can maintain constant enrollment. What this will do is that it will build us going forward into the new building, uh, that will be able to enroll into there comfortably. Too much empty space, which I don't think there'll be any of that. So, uh, as you see the numbers here, the way that it would work is that, uh, the base is three sixty five, I'm asking that if the, the committee votes to bring in three eighty fives and then break down so that it will be even, to keep it with the charter, would be that Fall River, this would be in addition, eight students, some say four, Swansea four, West Block four, which is twenty to read it from three sixty five to three eighty five.
Does the bypass list have to follow the charter?
The bypass list does follow the charter. Now, the, are you asking for the overall number, are you asking?
I'm asking the eight four four four, can we play with that? I mean, it's full, I mean, one of the Fall River representatives, we get most of students. Could we say five five, five five?
That would be up to the committee because the charter is the charter, and it's seventy six points, whatever students have to be from the city of Fall River on the initial admission, okay? In order to get to that, that's the number.
I think if our, I think if our initial enrollment falls within the charter guidelines, in order to keep it close to where it should be, we, we need to break it.
But even the bypass has to be.
I think, I think because it's gonna, it's gonna have more admission.
Well, we, we have, we have authority to change it.
But, I mean. But, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, even four, four and four is not the charter, right?
No, it's not, it's not.
So yes, you can.
I, I would suggest five five, five five.
So you want to go right across the board?
I would say to give them all, I mean, it's tough to get into Diamond from the town and just the city.
Okay, so, okay.
That would be my phone, but.
Well, we got a, uh, motion.
Oh, so, I'll make that motion.
Well, we already have the motion.
Need a second?
All right, so, uh, the motion is five five, five five, and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It doesn't change, it doesn't change the percentage, it just changes the number of the students we're taking in to keep at that percentage.
So it's, as we find it, it's five five, five five.
And you will see later on what the percentage is upcoming, I'll have to get a copy a little bit, uh, two or three pages.
All right, uh, Jay, House Building Subcommittee Report.
Uh, I have that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to do with that except that this point.
No votes may be taken.
Yeah, I don't know. Just, uh, if you have a little packet, just take a look at the projects that the, uh, that they're continuing to, uh, to do. Um, they're working and they'll see, they have, all the shops have people somewhere, because that's good. So our, our students are working out the deal and, uh, careers with the job keepers going.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Moving on to, uh, K L P N for where I'm open.
Yes, I do believe Ms. Brogan, uh, you're on there tonight, Ms. Brogan?
Yes, I am, can you hear me okay?
The L P N update, we have a great report in front of you too.
Can you hear me okay, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, uh, first we have our current accepted admissions for fall twenty twenty four for the full time cohort. Um, we were looking at our early admission, those people were accepted by February first, and we had seven students that were sent notice of early acceptance, and they had score ranges between fifty six and sixty two out of seventy total points. Two students accepted early, but we're waiting on those references. Full time day, regular admissions, people that will be notified, were notified as of today and going forward, were three more students. Um, deferred admissions, people from last year who couldn't come for this school year for certain reasons, um, do want to come back, there's three of them that will return this year for this school year, we have one medical leave that will be coming back for this year, um, two readmits, so two students from the current year that, um, they either withdrew or couldn't remain in the program for one reason or another, they followed the withdrawal procedure, so they're planning on coming back in for the fall twenty twenty four year, and one student, another student that's returning. So right now, we have our total potential, um, admissions of nineteen as of today, and we have, we're just continuing with the T's exams, so we had a T's exam today, um, one person was scheduled today and she did pass, but between two fifteen and three seven, we have an, uh, about twenty or a little bit over twenty people registered for those right now. Um, so they are picking up as I expected they would be, and our interview dates, I am interviewing pretty much on Thursdays and Fridays, and I will continue to do so, and, and we don't have anybody that's outstanding for an interview right now, um, once they meet all the requirements, I get them in for an interview. We, for recruitment, we have two info sessions a month, I had one today, and we had thirteen people at our info session, which is one of the largest ones we had, it was a really good turnout, um, a lot of people are coming now to the info sessions from various areas. Facebook has attracted a lot of people, um, when I say, how did you hear about us, a lot of people are saying from the Facebook posts we're putting out there, word of mouth from past graduates also seems to be, um, a real good advertiser for us. We did have an open house on January twenty fourth from five to seven P.M., and, um, we, we did send, you know, flyers to all the local homes posted on Facebook, and there was about twenty individuals that stopped by, uh, that were interested, plus family members, so it was a very busy night, it was a very exciting night, we had a lot of people show up, and we did get several applications that night, as well as people signing up for the T's exam and paying for it that night. Um, so it was a great turnout for us. Um, so for as far as admissions go, compared to last year at this time, I, I had three admissions accepted last year at this time, and this year I already have nineteen, so we're definitely in a better spot. Um, I think we're definitely going to reach the fifty max that we can reach this year. Um, accreditation commission for nursing education, our A S N accreditation, the candidacy self-report was submitted on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty four with confirmation of receipt, um, and this is a requirement for the Board of Nursing to be nursing accredited, and it is under review at this time, it, they said it will take approximately three to four weeks to get, um, feedback from them, and that should, I have two weeks left from, uh, today, two more weeks to wait for the results. So we are hoping that everything is well, and we'll continue with the accreditation process. And council on occupational education, our C O E, we are also awaiting their accreditation visit, they're coming May twentieth through the twenty third, I'm currently working on their report, it is due April twentieth, and, um, I have some of it done, but I'm still working to get that one done, now that the other one's already been submitted. So, um, that's as far as the program, the accreditation that I'm going through over there. Financial aid process, um, I was asked to speak about this a little bit, about how do the students find out about financial aid? Financial aid process begins in the information sessions, when I do have my information sessions, I show about four slides that talks about the, um, financial aid process, what the differences are in the grant or the loans they'll get, and it, we provide them with our school number at that time, so they're, they're told to apply as soon as they're interested in the program, it doesn't even mean they have to be admitted yet, just as long as they're interested, they should apply because those that apply earlier get more help money or free money to the program. So in two thousand twenty two, twenty three cohort, forty one out of the forty four students did receive some type of financial assistance equalling just over nine hundred thousand total. Um, it's, it, most of the students in the program are, do get financial aid, and a lot of them do receive grants and help grants because they're in, um, low cost living situations, they continue to face, we're seeing with our current students, they're continuing to face financial hardships just because of the costs of living, and, um, when I was doing my report last night, it's, one of the statistics is nineteen point seven percent of the people in Fall River are at poverty level, so that's one in five individuals in the program alone is at or below poverty level, it's kind of, it's a big number, you know? Um, the other thing I did want to bring up is that we have a new adjustment counselor over at the school, um, through balanced learning, and she is there on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and it's been wonderful to have her around, she's worked with several of my students, um, going through a variety of things in life that they needed a little guidance with, and she's been around and doing great, and students have had a positive feedback about this, and also new admissions, um, as they come in, we're talking to them about this availability, and it's been really positive, a positive experience, so. Any questions?
Yep, any questions, Mr. Chairman? Um, the next report you give us, this is really in depth, this is nice, but can we have a breakdown of where the students are, are living, like how many?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
Also, we also have a breakdown of how many of our Diamond students from our nursing programs are attending the L P N program? Uh, that would be nice to know.
How many are coming from the health assisting program in the high school?
And then, uh, third, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as soon as that left and coming back, um, are they getting any credit what they paid the year before, or are they starting from scratch?
They, they all have to stop from scratch unless it's a medical leave of absence, that's the only people that get their, uh, tuition basically put on hold, and they continue to pay that when they get back, but there is, um, some things that they get, like it's credit for, like they don't have to repeat their non-nursing courses, so their anatomy and physiology, the growth and development, things like that, they do not have to repeat those, so that is taken off of the tuition.
All right, the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, and I know it's going to be coming up, uh, with the budget coming pretty soon, but Mr. Kitchen, we have, you work with, uh, L P N, we have a list of their finances, uh, where they're at, and how much, uh, we were in the black for so many years, I want to see where they're at, where the expenditures are, and, uh, with the leftover, uh, budgets.
If you give that twice, because we're going to need that, Mr. Chairman, when they decide if they want to raise the rates or not, if you'd like to look at how things are going.
There is one change in their budget, budget scenarios that at least in order to verify the district has to monitor. Happen to you.
It's, it's. Well, I mean, she's, the program is a couple leaps and bounds, uh, currently the admissions, I mean, I'm very happy to see how robust it's becoming, uh, in comparison to what Uh, in comparison to what we've seen in, you know, in years past. So I'm fairly confident that our, our numbers are gonna look, you know, the way we want them to look.
So. Brogan's got a.
Yeah.
The emphasis was on recruitment and retention.
She's got a good job.
Yeah, she's done a great job and, uh, I appreciate it. And I just.
Thank you.
Just, I'd just like to have an idea of where we stand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You as well.
Thank you.
The policy supplementary report, Mr. Decker.
Get mine out. Let's see if I have enough. Yes. All right. So there's a policy we have for student travel regulations. And, uh, we came upon this when one of our, our clubs was looking to go somewhere. Uh, but to correct the policy on what we originally had, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the policy supplementary saw that the, uh, couple of words having changed, uh, our superintendent. Uh, I outlined everything in red that would make it for our teachers to be able to use our vans rather than having to pay for buses to take certain routes to places. So, uh, so this would save the district money. Uh, the old policy was making us get a bus for everything and pay drivers. So when they go overnight, the decker goes somewhere overnight. If they use the vans, we're not paying for a driver to sit there all night long. We're not paying for a driver. Uh, so that's, that's, uh, if you see it in front of anybody, have any questions on it?
Did the, the insurance, is it very specific in terms of its use? It's covered under one pretext where it may not be covered under another variable? So for example, if these vans are insured by, wherever we have insured by, its application can be used for this.
Well, we, we always had, uh, they've always been using the vans. Um, but what the policy was saying is they could use them late after certain hours or overnight. The vans had to be back. They couldn't.
And there's no clause in which our insurance says we can't do that.
No, I, I was not involved that by, uh, uh, by Mr. Kitchen or our attorney. We own the vans, so they're covered by a general liability policy.
All right, take that. Question. Who determines whether it's on via school van or a bus? When they put the proposal in, is everything for the, that they ask to go? We just had one tonight, but when they put it in, they have to ask for a use of transportation. It defaults to a bus unless it's only a small number of people. To save the district money, they reallow the use of a van, but it has to be a certain. So we set the van or the bus depending upon the number of students that are being transported. So basically it's, it's us.
Okay. So we make the determination whether it's a bus or a van.
Correct. Correct. So, um, Mr. Chairman, um, on the student travel regulations policy, I'm making a motion that, uh, uh, number one, step one, one, two, and three, we change to, um, the following, that the use of school vans. A late night or overnight student travel must have the approval, approval of the superintendent and the school committee. Uh, number two would just be the use of private auto vehicles, which is prohibited. And number three approval of late night and overnight student travel, use of commercial transportation carriers. Plus if you have to, and that's saying that we have the policy previous.
No, none of those, no, so we just.
So those are the issues. I apologize. So, um, as, uh, as indicated in the form of.
All right. So I have a motion. I need a second to approve the regulations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, at this time, you want to go back and revisit.
Um, can we do that now or should we wait till we got another?
The forty-eight hour.
Forty-eight hour.
It's technically, it's technically certain, should be on the agenda in this particular spot. We can handle it either way, Mr. Chairman, that's fine. We can go, we can do the other one.
Yeah, all right.
All right, M Superintendent Report. Uh, my superintendent reports, uh, this month is going to focus in on enrollment, admission and placement. I have probably flooded you with some paperwork. Uh, first of all, privacy, because it's still maintaining very strong. You do see the enrollment chart that I've given you, grade nine, ten, eleven, twelve, comparisons. It's been a good year, uh, say it that way. If you want the breakdown of where the students are, are the papers behind it, the grade nine, ten, eleven. And again, you can see where three pieces chicken. Continuing on for admissions. You go to the application percentages chart that I've given to you. You have active information. You will see that for the class of twenty-two, twenty-eight. You see that, uh, seven hundred and forty applications that have come in as of January the thirteenth. Um, understand that we had in December fifteenth, what we call early admissions that we set in. The admissions continue on until February the sixteenth, uh, which is that we ask the schools if they can accommodate by the sixteenth of February. Uh, then they're continuing to be rolling admissions as we go on. But as we sit here today, we have seven hundred and forty students who have applied to come to that. The charting, you see what the charters numbers are there? And then if we went on the basis of three eighty-five, those numbers would now be altered. Just voted a few moments ago, changed all of the census quantity of Westport's, uh, total number of students. With the distribution, that would be all. So it's five, 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 maybe roll all five. That, that's the admissions. Placement. Placement was a topic that was touched upon last, uh, meeting. You do have before you several charts. The one that I want to call your attention to is a little easier to read, the one that is stable. Every feature application percentages. But as for the placements, for the existing freshman on January of twenty-four. Um, there were some questions that came up about the programs. In order to clearly understand placements of students, it fluctuates. And if you flip to the page behind that, from January of twenty-three, you see that the first choices of students, it changes from year to year. And the year before that, it changed again. So it's a combination of the teachers teaching very well. It's a combination of the students, but really interest them and how it plays out. Um, what do I need? Begin what program and face it back now for three years. What did we do this year? What was last year? What was the year before? And you see that the numbers change. Why? Each student that comes in has a different interest in coming to Diamond. Some cases, they really like it. Other cases, it's a little different, meaning the shop that they're, they choose that one. But I gave this with the committee's information so they can see the history of how students choose shops and where they're placed. And what especially their first, second and third choices were when they were going to exploratory and how they ended up. I hope that that explains the process.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I was, obviously I was very vocal the last time about the, uh, amount of students this year that had, uh, twenty-six, uh, I'm sorry, that's, is it twenty-four were there? Twenty-six students? Oh, no, twenty. How many students did not get placed?
Uh, it's, that's, that's kind of a wide open question.
How many did not make one of the six choices?
Okay. Let's take that list right here. If we look, uh, it's one of the programs, there's eight of them in one program, did not suggest at all.
There was twenty.
The total number, all of that column is at the bottom, thank you, is twenty-four students. If you choose any.
So I, 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 I first want to, um, apologize for making the comment about drafting. Um, draft is a very good shot. My good friend, one of my best friends is graduating from here and so is another friend. So I, nothing against drafting. Um, my big thing is, um, Mr. Bello and, and, especially is, you really need to sit down and discuss how you're gonna do that. This was a lot of students this year, twenty-four out of past years were three and nine. But twenty-four students, my feeling is, is that the students should have been asked, starting with the best score of what shop they would like to go to and here's the open shops, not placed in according to what they believe. With what somebody else believes they should be in, not necessarily is what the student wants, if that's all they have to choose from. So I would like something changed in there from guidance that when they have a student, students, doesn't matter if there's three or twenty-four. But if they don't, then they should be said, okay, these are the four shops that we have, we have room in. If they want to come in with their mother and discuss it, because a lot of times the parents are gonna be upset that their child didn't get any of their choices. Um, but they should be talked to on why did they get the choices and these are the choices we have. And I think it would make that student a little bit happier because they're probably gonna be some of the, as, uh, you indicated on here. Who's it, how many kids, uh, forty-three last year that asked, they're a different shop and nine got it. That, they're gonna be probably one of the ones asking. So hopefully not, but I think that's something you, uh, have to work out, Mr. Bello, with your guidance. To change how they're doing things down there.
Yeah, absolutely, that.
All right. But I do, I do apologize, I think the comment is, you know, uh, draft is a very good shop. Um, I'm not being mean, but it is a very good shop and, and I have two good friends thinking with money on the tree. One that got a go-up job from here and many years later still thinking with money on the same job.
And to point out, I, I will repeat something Mrs. Torres has said, that she is going to be with the teachers in order to get a full review of what exploratory program, to see what if any changes need to be made. Are they increasing the involvement or change what they're doing? Where does it, where if anything, does anything have to change? And that's just good practice. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to calendar events.
Your night. Uh, this month we have, um, school vacation coming up. And our next scheduled, uh, school community meeting is set for March fourteenth. We have whole, not recently accepted twenty-four, anticipated twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I'm sorry, prior to the meeting. And we have policies.
We now have which one of those require a van?
Decker and dance, correct. Decker and dance are asking to use vans, correct? Uh, and Decker though, have a discussion with that instructor, okay, because of the number of students. I'd like to defer that to a bus.
Well, that's, okay, so you get right back to that policy. So you're saying no.
On that one, because of the number of students and the students saying they can go into the bus, yes. I, I agree with you. The answer is yes.
Yes, he's saying no.
Yes.
You asked him to no, you're saying yes. Right, you said yes.
It's, it's not so much, it's the.
I told him it's actually.
I told him he can go. But it doesn't say that. That's why, I, that's the way the policy should have said, it gives you a recommendation, not he has to approve it as well as you. That's what I was trying to point out.
Yeah.
He's saying no, so I guess it never gets you.
Well, his recommendation is to use the bus. I'm saying no to the vans.
Right, and that was my question. I was saying, if someone wants to use the van, you're just saying no, so it never gets to them. Because you and them gotta say no, so it never gets.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I was trying to point out. Is that where you want it to be?
Yes.
Well, well, that, that's why I asked, who makes the determination whether it's a van or a bus?
He should.
I understand that's what it comes down to.
Yeah. But ultimately the approval of the actual trip. Is you guys. That's, that's why it should have been both.
No.
Okay, oh, whatever you want to do.
I like him to make the decision and bring the decision to us.
It never gets there. He already voted, he already said no, so it doesn't get to you.
Transportation.
You don't have.
No, no, I, he brings it to us, not for our vote, but to tell us when he's decided.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so the Decker one, you're, you're looking for the bus person to move.
Good with the trip.
Yeah.
That would be a yes.
You already said yes.
Right.
But you don't have to take any further action, because you've already said no to the van.
Right. So it's defaulted to the bus.
But do we vote on the dance?
Do we vote? Because we already voted for that. We vote now that the dance, you take the van?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm assuming as part of that motion, by assumption, the superintendent already said yes.
Yes.
How many students are requiring the dance and how many are a Decker?
Dance is going to require two vans.
How many students is that?
About twelve.
Oh, that's.
I say twelve. Okay, this is an overnight in Vermont.
Fair enough.
So the, the expense of a bus to sit there for two days, um, is fairly expensive. Vans, we own the vans, so they're out of service for school use for those two days. It's, it's less expensive.
Okay.
Okay, so the owner, when you.
To me, it would only be the dance.
Finish the dance, certainly what it wants.
Because he said no.
Right, so we, we don't use the buses for the trip to.
Yes.
Right.
Fine.
I have to admit, and I noticed that, I did not need to make it this difficult.
How many kids?
I was just trying to provide it in such a way that.
It's technical, it's for the rest of the company's rights. So how many technical kids are there?
They want it, he could have public seventeen.
Okay.
They would point a three plus.
The plus is in the problem.
But the seventeen students could be an issue.
He didn't make it to.
If there's no place to buses.
The seventeen students that are traveling.
It's seventeen.
But the bus driver, talk, walk and figure it out.
And then you have the guidance, that you're gonna drive. Wait, this doesn't make sense. Seventeen people on one bus, not three, right?
There are three vans requested with Decker.
Oh, yeah.
So there are three drivers, three vehicles.
Right, right, right.
There's probably a higher likelihood of an issue arising from printing a bus.
Plus, the parking fee for each van is gonna be, what, forty dollars?
Sixty dollars.
For the, for the, for the summer bill.
For the purpose of this policy, for the purpose of this policy.
Yes.
You can watch the game in Riviera for forty dollars.
For the purpose of this policy, ultimately, the trip itself gets approved by us. Okay, the transportation, the transportation mode, which is what we're looking at. Ultimately falls in your hands.
Yes.
So we don't even have to be on here. That, for approval of the transportation mode. It should just go through you.
Not the transportation.
Because this is just for the, this is just for the transportation. The actual trip itself has to go through us, but ultimately, we don't even have to be on here for the approval of the transportation.
We already approved it.
So never have to.
Exactly what I'm saying.
We have to go back to the policy committee, we do it and we vote it.
I just, it's just, it's, the way it's written is.
Yeah.
It's, it's confused, not confusing, but it's.
Confusing.
You made it worse than I had it.
No, but it was trying to.
But it was trying to, yeah, not have it sloppy.
Right, yeah, I don't want, I don't want it sloppy.
I, I, I think at this point, once you make the determination to come to us for approval, it's done.
It's not a big deal. It's just.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, I'm, we need a motion.
But we have.
I.
Most of the, two, there's an item that falls.
Well, we're gonna do the, um, the Decker one first.
Yep.
Not the, the dance. We're gonna do the dance. So we have a motion to approve the dance.
Second.
The use of vans.
For the purposes of the dance competition.
Right. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Upstate.
One upstate. Okay, so now we'll move to the other one that you have.
The other one, uh, does fall within, uh, totally, forty-eight agenda, is that just received this, it is from a coach here. He has three students who have qualified to go to regionals, I believe, uh, at Boston University. Uh, and the date of the trip is February at night. That's why it was such, it's a track. This is track.
Track.
This is track and he is requesting the use of a van to go to Boston University to transport them. That is a yes, but because it is a late night, uh, it's early morning, six A M rather, to come back. Like, well, well, it's coming back late, um, I need to approve of the school committee.
And your approval of that.
Yes, okay. It is a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
To approve, to approve the out-of-state as well as use of van, both of you. Yeah, use of van because it's late night. So that's, it's both things, Salina.
Yes, all set.
Okay.
Great.
Good luck to them.
Yes.
Yeah, they did well. They had a good season.
Three happy days.
All right, we don't have any correspondence. The next meeting is scheduled for March fourteenth and we have a reason to go to executive session?
Yes, we do. Uh, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Paragraph three, to discuss graduate respect for collective bargaining or litigation for an open meeting may have potential mental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair still declares, which he does. Discussion has passed me, D A A, D T A negotiations.
All right, need a motion to go to the executive session?
Come on.
Motion made.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.